Thank you. Real call, please.
Yes. President Peng.
Here.
Vice President Romano.
Here.
Mr. Shi.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Mohan Patel.
President.
Mr. Bural Patel. Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Opening statement, Joe.
Yes. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law 1971, or '75 I should say, C-231 Sunshine Law, copies of this public meeting notice were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 3rd and April 26, 2023. Members of the public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws of the Board and applicable state regulations.
Thank you. Next, let's do the budget hearing.
All right.
Hey. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the Board of Education. My name is Eddie Aldarelli. I'm currently the Acting Superintendent of Schools here in Edison Township. To my right is my colleague, Mr. John Toth, who is our Business Administrator, and we are extremely pleased to present the 2023-2024 school budget to you this evening. Before we begin, this process would not be complete without the dedicated group of volunteers that we have up here on the stage currently right now. Just want to take a moment to introduce our Board of Education President, Ms. Shannon Pang, our Vice President, Mr. Joseph Romano, who also serves on our Finance Committee. We have Mr. Bureau Patel, Mr. Mohin Patel, and Mr. Vishal Patel, who are also members of the Finance Committee, Mr. Brian Rivera, Mr. Jerry Shi, who is the Chair of our Finance Committee, Mr. Douglas Schneider, and Ms. Virginia White. Their commitment to not only this process but for the educational components for our students is really impressive, and I want to thank them for all the hard work that they've done throughout this process. To begin with tonight, you know, the mission here in Edison Township is really twofold. We want to focus on academic and student achievement for all students at the highest levels while at the same time focusing on things that are their soft skills, right? The ability to communicate, their self-efficacy, their self-worth. And to be honest with you, this isn't really something that's been new here in Edison Township. As a matter of fact, we actually have an old ledger that we found in Ms. Judy Cox's office, and this is actually a ledger that is from, I believe, July of 1897 and ends up in June of 1904 of the budget minutes, right? So these are the budget minutes. It's in a ledger. They're handwritten. And as you kind of sift through these things, they talk about all of the things that we're actually going to talk about today. In some of the comments, it talks about moving and erecting a brand-new school. It talks about teacher well-being, the ability to recruit qualified staff, school nurses, administrative positions. It talks about the adoption of curricular initiatives, promoting after-school programs for students. In all honesty, if you looked at our 2023 minutes, you can almost see the parallel for this. And it really just resonates with me, the continuity and the commitment that this community, as well as this body and our staff have to the education of our students. And as we continue to grow as a community, as we continue to grow as a community through accurate funding and the fiscal responsibility of this Board and previous Boards, we're able today to present a budget that we are extremely proud of, that is favorable, and that we believe that the community can endorse. To begin with for my portion of this, I'm just going to go over the overview and kind of set the agenda for this. My colleague, Mr. Toth, is really going to dive into the details of the numbers. Tonight's presentation is going to talk about program and personnel highlights, revenue and appropriations, the capital projects, which are really the hallmark of what we are committed to here to address our overcrowding issues, and the estimated tax implications. So just a few program highlights that we thought were pertinent to mention right now. We're extremely proud of the implementation and the inception of our dual-language academy. That's set to kick off at Washington Elementary School in September of 2023. My compliments to Ms. Mahabir and her team for really being pioneers in this area. This is going to pertain to the youngest students in our school, and we're going to be providing instruction in literacy and other academic content in both English and their target language. Congratulations to her team, and this really is the hallmark, I think, of great things to come. One of the other items that we've talked about over the last couple of Board meetings from our Curriculum Committee, that's headed up by Mr. Vishal Patel, is the development of a middle-school schedule. And during this process, the Committee, as well as our administrators, really thought outside of the box to provide all of the things that we know are good for kids. The opportunity to be immersed in world language and music while at the same time providing designated periods for students to work on things that are meaningful to them, individualizing instruction, providing them time to work on stuff such as as little as homework to self-directed plans, to getting extra help, opportunities for peer-to-peer learning. It is really extremely creative, and I thank Ms. Polikowski, as well as the Curriculum Committee and all of the middle-school administrators that worked on this and continue to work on this. One of the charges that this Board has always harped on is the expansion of district-sponsored clubs, co-curriculars, and sports. We are committed to providing more after-school activities for our students to engage in. Our staff support this as well. And, you know, it really provides opportunities for kids to excel in areas outside of academics. It truly is impressive, and it's something that they've tasked me, as well as the administrative team, with. As always, we're always looking for ways to expand our elective courses to provide students with opportunity. But one thing that I don't think that we highlight enough is our dual enrollment program in our college courses. And correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Polikowski, I believe this is the first year that we're going to have students graduating with both a high school diploma and an associate's degree, correct? Yeah, that should get a round of applause, to be honest with you, because that's actually the foresight of this Board, as well as previous leadership that has really hallmark that. And we need to do an even better job of promoting that for our kids. Our previous meeting in April, we had Dr. Tuie speak about the expansion of our preschool program and our commitment under the direction of Mr. Romano and the members of our Special Education Committee. We are set to kick off this initiative in September of 2023 with all of the information that he talked about in the previous meeting. Compliments to Dr. Tuie, as well as the member of his team. We're really looking forward to providing universal preschool for our youngest learners right now. It's going to be a monumental task, but we all know that Dr. Tuie's up to that. So thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Tuie. And last but not least, a lot of the things that we focus a lot on academics, but also at the same time, we really need to focus on student wellness, right? Their ability to cope with, not only dealing with peers, but dealing with the pressure of being, you know, in a highly competitive academic environment. We are committed to providing specialized counseling opportunities, both from external and internal avenues. We're looking for specialized supplemental counseling services, but also at the same time providing our in-house counselors with targeted professional development opportunities so that they have the skills, even more skills, and are equipped to deal with, you know, our neediest students that need support, not only socially, but also from a career path. And last but not least, we're also committed to our staff wellness as well, too. You know, as you walk around schools, you definitely see the camaraderie, as well as sometimes the stress of dealing with the end of the year, right? The end of the year is a stressful time in schools. They're doing an unbelievable job with regards to that. We're committed to staff wellness as well, too. And listen, they are really where the rubber meets the road. So I thank all of our teachers, our power professionals, you know, the individuals that get students to and from school, from our custodial staff, and obviously our leadership team, that really are the glue that bind everything together. With program highlights, also comes some personnel highlights, too. And all of these staff members are tied to the programs that we just talked about currently right now. Our commitment to our special needs students, providing them instruction in an aspect that meets their individual needs while at the same time ensuring that caseload management from our members of the Child Study Team is done in a fair and manageable fashion so that parents are getting information in a timely and quick manner. We are increasing our world language teachers currently right now to address our middle-school program and the changes in our middle-school schedule. We talked about increased elective opportunities. Business is just one of the many ones that we're looking to do. Our dual-language and our ELL programs, you know, new teachers to support those pieces, specifically over at Washington Elementary School. And last but not least, you know, we need to do a we do a great job, but we realize that staff development is something that, you know, on the heels of the pandemic, that we really need to begin building back up again. So we're committed to providing specialized staff development opportunities with the addition of one of our staff development teachers. Before I turn it over to Mr. Toth, who's going to dive into really the nuts and bolts of the numbers behind the budget, I do want to compliment all of our administrative team, as well as the Board, for their efforts in this area. This is really something that I think the community can get behind, and as you see the magnitude and the scope of the work that we're doing for the value that you're getting, I'm privileged to be a part of that aspect. So, Mr. Toth.
Thank you very much. A little hand for Dr. Aldarelli. Thank you. So you see a lot of new programs, a lot of new things the district's going to be offering, and it sounds great. And I always hear that's things from my wife like that at home, and I always ask, well, what's it going to cost? Well, now I'm going to tell you. So our operating budget this year is $346 million, estimated. That's about a $50 million increase last year. The local share, right, the tax levy portion from the local taxing authority is $235 million. I'm going to take you to this slide. So if you look at this slide here, this is the local tax levy for school taxes. It's been $235 million for fiscal year '22, '23, and yet again '24. That's three years at zero, and yet still a $40 to $50 million increase in spending on programs and facilities. And that's done with hard work from the administration, the teachers, the committees, the Board, and being fiscally responsible. Now we're going to take a look at the other sources of revenue. I'm not going to get into the nitty-gritty here, but as you can see, the tax levies on the top are state aid. If anyone didn't hear, we got a little bit of extra, right? Couple bucks, about $26 million. So that's a big component. We have some Medicaid aid, miscellaneous revenue, our fund balance, cap reserve. You always hear, we have all this money. Yes, we are using the money we save. We're putting it back into our facilities. That's up by $20 million. So if you see year over year, we have an 18% increase, right? $293 million to $346, zero increase for the last three years. I mean, I've never seen it. It's a tremendous feat for the Board. It's much to be proud of. Okay, this is the appropriations. This is our spending by category. As you can see, there's instruction, there's tuitions for out-of-district students, OTPT services, general administration, school administration. I'm not going to read through the list. This is posted online so you can review it. But you can see we have some increase in costs, transportation, there's been an increase, employee benefits, Social Security, things of that nature, pension contributions. We have an increase in staffing, right? Dr. Aldarelli said we're going to support new programs. We're going to hire teachers. But one of the biggest I want to point out to you, $30 million in capital outlay. $30 million. That's huge. That's why you're able to have that big jump. Between that and your capital reserve, being fiscally responsible, this Board, nine people, doing the right thing, has allowed us to get to where we're going and deliver on promises that were made a year ago, we're taking action on. Capital projects. These are some small projects by many districts. They would be considered large. It's about $2.4 million. At varying elementary schools, middle schools, we're investing in renovating bathrooms, kitchens, courtyards, putting money back into our PPE, as I call it, our property plant and equipment. This is the big one. If you guys, I don't know how many came out, last year was before my tenure here, there was a construction plan put together by some of these Board members and a previous Board to deal with the overcrowding issues here in Edison. And this is the one of, I mean, because we've already taken action, but this is the next larger step in that Phase One, that we're actually taking action. We got the dollars allocated to be ready to make moves in the next budget year on those expansions. And you'll see them here. You have a gym addition and auditorium at Woodrow Wilson, gym addition and auditorium at John Adams, Thomas Jefferson, new gym, offices, new front entrance, cafeteria renovation at JP Stevens. We have an auditorium, I'm sorry, yeah, auditorium renovation at JP Stevens, and 28 classroom building addition at JP Stevens to help with overcrowding. And then we're going to be converting some locker rooms to classrooms at Woodrow Wilson. All told, $59 million by a variety of sources, and I've highlighted them here. So if you want to go back and look online, I was copious with my notes. Phase One projects, these were approved back in '22. So you have the Lincoln School Gym, which is done. You have Herbert Hoover, which, brand-new gym, we've awarded that. I think we've had our first kickoff meeting today, Mr. Colubus. Be breaking ground soon on that. All of this is possible. Saving through capital reserve, allocating additional state aid into capital outlay, and utilizing unreserved fund balance from prior years has allowed us to get to where we are, still at zero for the last three years. This is our total budget. We have the operating budget. You could see 10, 11, and 12. You could see the difference, $346 million for fiscal year '24 as opposed to $293. We're up $52 million, or 18%. Our Special Revenue Fund, which is your grants and entitlements, SIDEA, this is standard to budget, 20% less. We won't get our awards to July, so you'll see it down. That will tick back up once we get our awards, but that's not part of the operating budget. And then we have a star here, because this is almost unheard of as well. Debt service, which is another taxing portion of the budget, which you tax on debt, i.e. bonds. We made our last bond payment this year when I first arrived in Edison. I've never seen this. 10 years I've been in this business, I've never seen a district with no debt payments. So you have zero debt service. So actually, the tax levy is ticking down. 500 grand, we'll take it. So all told, the total budget, when you combine all the funds, the operating budget, the Special Revenue Fund, the Debt Service Fund, which doesn't exist, you go from a $301 million budget to a $352 million budget, increase of $50.8 million through being fiscally responsible. This is another important slide, right, for the homeowners? Estimated tax impact on the average assessed home based on a calendar year, not fiscal. So this is comparing '22 to '23. You can see that valuations are up. Our tax levy's the same. The school rate has come down. The average home is increased by $1,000. But all told, your average school tax bill on the average home is going to decrease by $3. Doesn't sound like a lot, but in a lot of other towns, it never goes that way. So this is a lot to be happy about. I'd like to thank my staff and obviously the administration, everybody sitting up here, the Board, Dr. Aldarelli, because without their guidance, this doesn't happen. And key takeaways. Someone told me to put this slide in here who, he was right. I want to leave you with a good message of what we're trying to accomplish here. And we're going to accomplish new programs, both co-curricular and extracurricular, and curricular. We're investing $50 million into our PPE, into our capital assets, and it's going to be no in-cost, no increase on the school tax levy. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Dr. Aldarelli. Thank you, Mr. Toth. Now we have public comments on the budget. Budget only. See, now approval of the 2023-2024 budget. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Real call?
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Brian Rivera.
Absolutely.
Mr. Doug Schneider.
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel.
100% yes.
Ms. Virginia White.
Yes.
Mr. Jerry Shi.
Yes.
Vice President Romano.
Yes.
President Peng.
Yes.
We have a budget.
Thank you. Great work, everybody. Now we have personnel. Dr. Aldarelli. You don't have to go through this. Nothing? Administration? Okay. So now we have resolutions for personnel. Do I have a, do I have a motion?
Yes, motion.
Real call, please.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Brian Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes, but I will abstain from any conflicts I have on file with the State Ethics Commission.
Noted.
Thank you.
Mr. Mohan Patel.
Yes.
Ms. White.
I have to abstain on Section 3 and on Section 3K, but everything else is just fine.
Noted. Mr. Shi.
Yes.
Mr. Vice President Romano.
Yes.
President Peng.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Administration report, Dr. Aldarelli.
Great. Yeah, thank you very much. You know, we have a few items of business right here. We have approvals of some mandated policies that we recently got in. We also have the approval of some of our field trips, things that you've seen on the agenda in the past. This gets a busy time of year in schools. As the weather gets a little bit better, the field trips increase. We have a settlement agreement, and our final piece with regards to this is our school self-assessment for our Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act, which is a mandated component of the law. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Then we have, now we have business admission report. Joe, do you have your finance resolutions?
Yes. They're not where they... Okay, here we go. Sorry, they're way in the back of the book. Financial report. So we have the, obviously, the approval of the monthly minutes. We have some contracts with Monmouth County Special Services for cooperative purchasing, which is two pages long. We have an agreement for participation with coordinated transportation with Monmouth County Special Services. We have an amendment to our LRFP. Obviously, we're going to be doing a lot of projects here, so that's going to change the dynamic of our long-range facilities plans. DMR will be doing that update. We have some contracts for fire alarms, school locker corridors. These are some projects that are going to be taking place this summer. Cooperative purchasing agreements. You could see the slide that I went through with the smaller projects. This kind of ties out to that. So not only are, you know, did we budget for it, but we're taking action. We're ready to move. That's notated here. We have the approval of the online registration program, acceptance of some grants, acceptance of some non-public school aid program money, and our traditional transportation report. That's it.
Thank you. Now we have public comments for the resolutions. Anybody? No? Motion to end public comments?
Motion.
Second.
Real call?
Madam President, can I have a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
So just on item, on this item F for Herbert Hoover parking lot, we know the construction is going on. Is this going to, the construction going to impact the parking lot, which is paved, or?
No. There'll be no, there'll be no minimum impact to, with the paving, to operations of the school.
No, no, I just don't want, you know, we paved it, then you have this, you know, truck start going on and...
Yeah. I understand what you're saying.
Mr. Colubus and I actually had a conversation about that very thing today, and I believe that he came up with some excellent solutions to avoid exactly what you're talking about, Mr. Shi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve the administration resolutions.
Motion.
Second.
Real call?
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Mr. Shi.
Yes.
Mr. Romano.
Yes.
President Peng.
Yes. Motion to approve the finance resolutions.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Vishal Patel.
Finance. Oh, yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Mr. Shi.
Yes.
Vice President Romano.
Yes.
President Peng.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're going to do policy report next meeting. So next is, I just have one announcement, location change for our May 23 public meeting. It's going to be here at Edison High. Now we have Board member comments. Anybody?
Word, President? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Romano.
I'd like to thank the Board. I'd like to thank the previous Board. Without everybody working together, this budget was impossible. The previous Board put together a plan to put full-day kindergarten, which will help us fulfill our plan for all-day preschool. It's a plan. It's operational. You'll see things happening by September of 2023. Without this Board and the previous Board, it wouldn't have happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider.
Word, President. I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Toth and Dr. Aldarelli. I thought that presentation you gave was just enough detail, not so much that we got too bored, right? But it was just really, really great, and I think it's something that this Board should be proud of. A 0% tax levy for this community is great, and then you add in all of the capital projects that we're doing. Kudos to you. Great presentation. Thank you, Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Shi.
I can't help not ask questions. So first is an announcement that, you know, you're going to hear me at the next Board meeting. We talked about providing summer intern to our students. Those positions have been posted on the district website, in my understanding. And on top of that, the district is allocating $90,000 for summer help. This is to hire our high school students to help with different projects in the school district. So, you know, you have the, you know, the professional internship. Then you have all these additional positions to work in the school district to help our staff. So is it going to be posted, or it's already been posted?
Yeah, I believe we put that information up on the website with regards, yes, absolutely.
It's already posted? Okay. So application process, just go apply. Along that line, the other day when I was S. Senator, I was at, in the afternoon, 4:30-ish, and we have a young lady came in looking for work paper. Of course, the office has closed. So my question is, is it possible? I don't know exactly what is the process it takes for the students to get the work paper. to, for the students to get the work paper. Is it possible we can use the, you know, the portal to fill out certain informations so, to make their life a little easier? Because I'm pretty sure this kid, you know, had to do a lot of things to just come over and but found out that the, the office was closed.
Great suggestion, Mr. Shi. We'll make sure that we provide that information not only online. I think I read something recently, too, that New Jersey is, is going to online working papers exclusively as well, too. So, I don't know if they got that initiative from you, but.
I don't.
That will, that's something I think we can, we can definitely implement, without a doubt. Absolutely, I'll talk.
Yeah, we have the student's information and stuff. It just, you know, if the student can just print it out.
Located in one spot and submitted.
They don't have to come in.
Without a doubt, that shouldn't be a problem. Thank you.
That's it.
Mr. President.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
I think while Mr. Shi is talking about online stuff, I know one of the things that parents has to do is athletic forms, right, twice a year, and it's a manual process, and a lot of time it get lost, right? Mine has gotten lost in the past. We talked about how do we make it online so that the parents can submit their papers online? Is it something, you know, we're looking at?
I believe Mr. Benedict has put that in place already as we speak, so they'll have the opportunity to not only fill that online. Obviously, there's, there's a step in the process where they give that to their, you know, their physician, and then in turn, turn it over to our school physician. But the suggestion from the Athletic Committee at that time was received and implemented.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rulara.
Go ahead.
You sure?
All right.
I'm going to be quick. First of all, I just want to say thank you and congratulations to our retirees. We have one here for 27 years and 23 years serving our district, so congratulations, and I hope life treats you very well after retirement. And also, thank you and congratulations to all our staff that be reappointed. You know, our staff works very hard, so it's, it's a big deal when the superintendent brings everybody, everybody back for reappointment. That means that you trust our staff with our kids, so I want to say thank you again to our staff. Again, there's a lot of national recognition days as well. I don't want to say them all, but to all of our staff out there, thank you for your hard work and dedication. And finally, the final thank you is to John and Eddie and the rest of the board for putting this budget together. Our community is very thankful for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moen Patel.
Thank you, Board President. First of all, like I always say, you have to plant the seed, and you got to water it, then it grows and bears the fruit. These three years of 0% budget tax levies, thank you to Jerry for planting that seed two years back, three years back, and it was part of our campaign that is 0%, and I'm so happy that it continued, and we were able to save the taxpayers' money. On top of that, the savings that we created throughout the years to make sure that we're able to have the money to pay for all these projects. So I want to say the physical, physical savings that Jerry has put in, in the past, and that's bringing fruit to today's table, I'm so thankful for that, and I'm thankful for previous boards, this board, and the boards before, to make sure that we were putting our students first. So, just want to say kudos to you guys, and I want to say kudos to our administration as well, our superintendent and our BA.
You're making me nervous.
In regards to the budget presentation, well done. We have so much more to do. We have so many more projects that are in the pipeline for next year and the year after, 20 additional classrooms to this building, 20 additional classrooms to JP. Our elementary schools are going to get updated, so all these projects are going to come up. We're going to be needing funding, and I don't know if we can guarantee 0% every year for the next five years, but we will do our best to manage our money properly and make sure that we get the students what they need. So I want to thank you guys so much for everything that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody? Yeah, I just want to echo that. I remember three years ago, you guys, Jerry and Mo, it's a campaign, zero tax increase. I was thinking that's impossible, but it happened, and Mrs. White, too. Yeah, three of you, so we, we made it work. And just congratulations to Dr. Alderelli, Mr. Toth, for a great job, and to our administration for making this a reality. And I know as an Edison resident, I'm very happy to see this. Also, I want to thank Jerry for bringing that initiative for the high school internship. I would encourage all the high school parents, kids, you know, look, look at our website, see if this is something that you can find interesting. I know as a parent myself, I have always spent a lot of time and money finding summer camps for my kids, but this internship from our vendors, yeah, I do want to thank our vendors, too, for, you know, giving back to our community, helping out our kids. This would be a great opportunity for our high school students to have some real-life experience and possibly making some money in the summer. So, go search, it's on the website already, right? So, yeah, I encourage our high school students to apply. That's all. Thank you. Anything else? Seeing now, I'm moving to public comments. No? That lady over there? You can go to the podium and.
Should be up in the top, right? Yeah.
Just a question, where on the website do you find that? Because I can't find it.
I'll come down, I'll come down right after this, and we'll walk you through.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Motion to close.
Motion to adjourn to the privileged session.
Close public session.
Huh? Oh, motion to close the public comments.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn to the privileged session.
Motion.
Oh, I have to read this. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Acts, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adjourn to a confidential session for the purpose of discussing broker of record for employee health benefit and insurance risk management service.
Sorry, Madam President, can we, can we also add a, a brief update on arbitration, a personal arbitration matter?
Yeah, so we're going to add.
That will be short, I promise, everybody.
So we are expected to coming after, coming up, coming out after the privileged session, but it might take a while with the presentation and discussion, might be a couple of hours. You're welcome to stay. If not, we'll see you next, next meeting.
We need to do a vote on that.
Motion to, um, adjourn to privileged session.
Yes, motion.
Got a second?
I'm second.
Mr. Shi, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Good job, perfect.
Thank you.
Should be, yeah.
We're ready.
Okay, meeting resumed. Motion to resume the meeting.
Motion.
Motion, okay. So now we have a.
Technically, do all in favor.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Good call, Matt.
Thank you. So now we have a resolution.
Yes.
John, you want to read a resolution?
We have a resolution here, be it resolved at the Edison Township Board of Education upon the recommendation superintendent schools and a business administrator. Wow, that's nice. Appoint for District Risk Manager, Alamo Insurance as a broker of record for property and casualty, errors and omissions, liability, automobile, workers' comp, and other insurance coverages, coverages such as volunteer, and bonding coverage for the fiscal, for the school year '24, '23, '24. At the standard commission rate set by New Jersey Schools Insurance Group, NJSIG, SIG as pursuant to NJSA 18A, colon, 18A, dash, 5A, 10. We have a motion?
Motion. I second.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. Thank you, I appreciate that. Was that Joe?
Joe's first, yes.
Joe and Jerry.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
No.
Mr. Moen Patel.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Mr. Shi.
Yes.
Vice President Romano.
Yes.
President Peng.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So, the next motion for health insurance broker.
Okay, I have a resolution to read, appointment of broker of record, employee health benefits. Be resolved that the Edison, Edison Township Board of Education approves the appointment of RD Parisi as broker of record for employee health benefits for the Edison Township Board of Education for the school year '23, '24, at a commission rate capped at their response per RFP for medical, prescription, dental, and stop laws pursuant to NJSA 18A, colon, 18A, dash, 5A, parentheses, 10. Do I have a motion, please?
I have a motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vishal Patel. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Mr. Moen Patel.